Well, we did an opt in and we have.
Licensing to that.
Yeah.
So you have licensing on the on the website. Okay. Cause I looked before, the only one's not on there that I could see, but.
Yeah, and we just have one, we have a license.
Yep, dispensary license, I don't know population, no testing, no. Yeah, there's four different licenses today. Only one, one dispensary license is on it too.
Okay, my question is because, you know, we got a lot of empty buildings.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I don't know what you guys are asking for permit cost.
Have to look that up.
Is it, would it be twenty-five hundred or five thousand?
I know it's the five thousand.
Twenty-five is universal because I don't get approved by the state.
Yep, that's right, definitely, yep.
Basically, you answered my question, then you've already addressed it.
Yep.
And then all the zones out of it, they have to be five hundred feet from a park.
A thousand feet from the school.
The school's in Poland.
That's state law. And then park and churches, parks and churches down to this path.
Yeah, but I don't think it's a thousand or.
Yeah, because, well, question with the churches, you know, our business district is closer to five hundred feet from the churches.
But that is something we can address, add zones.
Yeah.
But it's just part of the plan.
Right, that's where, you know, because, I got buildings. Yeah, actually, I want to have one building left, I'm selling the other one.
Okay.
What's any selling? Uh, the one, the one with the dog groomer?
Okay.
And selling it to him.
Okay.
So, you know, I'm looking at, okay, can I advertise saying this building could be in the zoning, you know?
Yep.
It'd kind of be full active.
Okay.
You know, and if going does it, maybe in a year when I retire, maybe I'll work more. Right now, I don't see them as economically feasible, especially with you guys wanting to.
You said twenty-five or five? Cause five thousand's the application, and then it's every year it's renewable, it's twenty-five hundred.
Yep. No, I think, I think if you fail to fail in the application, you'd have to pay twenty-five hundred.
Yep, so the application is five thousand dollars, twenty-five hundred is terrible if the state denies you.
Yeah, well, if you're going to start out, you better have all your stuff sewed up.
Yeah.
Cause the state is five thousand. You know, but, you know, five thousand is a lot less than Hartford, which is ten, two balls, which is a hundred, that'd be two years. But, you know, with the, I'd say economically feasible, eighteen hundred, Hartford, so far in the state of South Dakota.
Yep.
You gotta sell a lot of product to.
They had some people at Hartford already.
Hartford, well, that's what I mean, they, and, you know, the biggest thing, most new places is where they're wanting to get their product. Because the role is, it's all gotten broad inside the filter, the one who wanted to grow and like, do things so far.
See, it's a plan here.
No, because that is not, uh.
I think that's time to revisit.
Right, that's not a state.
We'll do one chamber once in a while.
Yeah, well, there's licenses, Hartford has two licenses to grow, there's like twenty licenses to grow out there. So are they up and going there? That guy's sending about a year or no? We're close enough to see balls. In my opinion, I think you guys are a little high on the permit, because there's, you know, our main street is there.
Yep.
No one wants to come into this town because we're, we're too far out, you know, I had a couple of people, kind of tough businesses. One of them was so good that she outgrew everything, and she's got her own warehouses and website and, you know. You know, she started out of the basement and went to the little house, and she went to two buildings in town and just outgrew it.
Yep.
You know, the other one, she worked after her fun, flower shop, she lasted about three years, it just couldn't, couldn't generate enough income, you know. And we got, how many buildings sitting empty? You know, you know, they don't have economic development, get more venue houses in here.
Well, that's kind of our plan though, is downtown, if they address, once we get this going, downtown's our next intention.
But, you know, that's, I thought long and hard, how do we help the town?
Yep.
No, Bubbeys went under, but all of a sudden now, Dollar General comes in and you can't find a parking spot in there sometimes.
Yeah.
You know, they, basically, they were the same type of stores, except that they don't have meat there, you know.
No.
You know, and they're dressing, you know, fail over there, now, let me say about that. You know, Buffalo Trading Post out in the middle of the country has fifty, sixty people for dinner every day.
Yeah.
Very important, we can't get a.
Yeah.
But my question of a cannabis was, you've got adjusted, I'll have to go to the website and look into what you guys got. Because when I talk to you, I naturally want to be, you know.
How long ago was me?
He's a council member. He was talking to me a little bit, you know.
Okay.
And, yeah. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks.
Kevin, yeah, Amy, you just join in? Any Country Days?
Yeah, Country Day, um, so we're just doing our follow-up from our weekend. Um, I thought it went really well.
Yeah, they had a lot of positive feedback.
Yeah. It didn't look like it down in the park, cause with the tractor pulls, you know, coming back in, it really spread out our people, but they had like a hundred and twenty-eight pulls down there. So that was awesome for being gone for a couple of years and, um, Jake and Taylor did a great job again, and they'll do it again this year, so the tractor pull will be back, we already have it on the calendar for next year. Um, July twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-three is next year.
You guys asking for the same funds just yet?
Yeah, I have, um, the sheet here, uh, you guys have always kind of done the inflatables, and that's really worked out really well, um, especially like Pete gets the hoses and, so it's just really nice. If you guys have something else in the weekend that you guys want to sponsor, I'd be happy to write it down, otherwise, if you want to go with the inflatables again, that's like a quick. So, and then, you know, I thought we did a really good job of putting signs out, showing who sponsored, we have a lot of businesses that came off this year, um, with our donation requests, we had a huge response from that. It really raised the issue that for Thomas to have it again, so. Um, so for the free swim. Uh, wrote a check for five hundred and eight dollars this year. We have a hundred and twenty-six children and twenty-six adults. Last year, the first was eleven hundred, then we settled at nine hundred. I have a real, real hard time going to this, um, this anonymous donor in town and telling him how much it is this year.
No.
I don't know how to look at him and say, I don't know where the four hundred dollars is at, because we have the same amount of kids in that pool.
Yeah. Well.
I know, it's like water over the bridge, and all last year, we're moving forward, but it looks really bad.
Yeah.
It's more nice to be very aware of that.
We were really happy to cooperate with them.
Yeah.
Very, very supportive.
Yeah, well, and then Grace and I even sat down and talked about, and we did the number system on the vans, and.
Yeah.
We told the kids, uh, well, we had certain vans for, uh, you know, non-members, and then ones that were season holders. So there's two different colors, and then when they took it out, they wrote their name down by a number, and they had to remember that number, so if they did lose a van, they'd come back, remember your number? Yep, is that your name? Yep, and they get a new van, and then, so it wasn't checked again, so I think it was a.
I mean, it was busy for them up there, uh, I think it was Summer Vanderbilt that was majority person doing that. She says it was chaotic, but they understand it's a weekend like that, even if you didn't have vans, maybe that'd be.
Well, I think we told, we put on Facebook to come early check-in, eleven-thirty, we could probably maybe set that up a little bit earlier too, and maybe people know there's a early check-in, and it won't be such a mad rush next time.
I just hope this anonymous donor in town that, you know, has been very generous, and wants these kids to be able to have a good time and use that pool.
Yeah.
Doesn't get a little disheartened on the big difference, right? So, I just want you guys to be aware of it. Um, do you guys have any feedback or comments to us that you could see changed, or what you liked? We'll start our planning again in June, right?
Heather, as you should run it the same way you did last year, this year, I thought it worked really smooth, and it worked out really nicely. Thank you for doing all the hard work.
Well, and thank you to Pete and Diane, and you guys helping with the garbage is with me.
Yeah, very appreciative.
Yeah, you don't have to do that, you're there to hang out at the game and stuff, so. At least we can do it. And I have your hose, Pete, I'm gonna get it back. It's safe and secure.
Hey, you just keep it aligned, you need it aligned, I know where it is, that's all I care.
Yeah, I have it, so, yeah.
We have people here from four or five other small towns too, and they were amazed, the house when we went and the parade was, like, the people from Humboldt.
Forty-seven, yeah. Forty, but the total is eighty-two things, like, in this place.
The people from Humboldt said they had people go back around and go for their parade twice, just so it looked like it.
It wasn't like we take pride on it, not true.
We never have problems, even during COVID, we had a great.
Kids don't want to pick up candy no more, they're.
So, anyway, otherwise, like, we did really good this year, and, um, the band was good, the tournament, um, Pete, the third base is way off. So this, looks like maybe when it got drug, it drugged the base out of its hole, and then it got put back, but it got put back quick. So it's about two and a half feet off of where it should be.
Okay, I'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
I know we gotta do some work to the base, because the pegs or whatever that are in the ground are too small, so the bases would kind of wobble around down there, so.
Is it possible to look at getting a double base on first?
I'm sure we could, yep.
That would be something I know that they would really like, with that first base, we have to run through it.
Look.
I don't know, I mean.
Something I heard was if we could get famous dates back. That was, uh, more than much, did we?
What did we look into that? We paid them to come out, the committee that was before us paid them to come out as well.
Oh, we never paid them?
Okay.
Yeah, I will write that down, we did actually have a food truck leave.
Yeah.
Um, JJ's confession will no longer be back, uh, they, I think they just had an issue personally, and we kind of got the.
Right.
Front government, but they won't be back, they did kind of bash us a little bit, um. We made it due, so we are looking at some.
I think we do have a barbecue event from that local, that festival.
Okay.
Just some other stuff.
Maybe just the barbecue.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, famous days was called that.
Yeah.
One day.
Yeah, we never paid that.
I will write that down, and we'll bring that up for you. But yeah, otherwise, I mean, so, I mean, if you want me to write down something, or you guys can just toss it on what maybe, kind of know what we do, Dream Reli Bank did, uh, DJ, which was my uncle. So, if there's something, otherwise, the inflatables are always going to be here, so, and it's a big hit to us for those who are in the streets.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all we could have, and we'll be back, um, I don't know.
Yeah, like you said.
February, March, if that works, because that'll give us a month or two just to kind of.
Get our dusting around.
Did you, uh, hear any, any feedback on that dugout being, going this year with dugout owners?
Um, no, cause I mean, I, uh, um, I contacted like all my fourteen U, sixteen U coaches, and told them that they needed to let their people that were playing know that. If you have a tent, you bring it, if you don't have it, we have a storm, blah, 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 so, and then during Country Days, I just put two big tents up there, so. We kind of made you, and then Trevor built that bench, which was like, uh, like, some of the four years.
Uh-huh, up and, up and, up and on.
Not just because I didn't have nothing else. I just squeeze a bench in here.
Yeah, so I mean, I feel it might, if we can get that.
I think we, we did, Chaz, we did get back, insurance did get back on us, so.
Yep.
I never look at going forward with those dugouts, because I don't know what the problem's looking like.
And we'll have to, Pete's on the line, he was gonna do another quote, just see what it'd be to put the bigger fence in, and just go rope over between them.
Okay.
Like the other ones versus.
Yeah.
I mean, it'd probably be cheaper, plus we'd have a nicer fence.
Yeah.
And then just, I, if you can leave the in and out on both sides, I think that's really nice for that level. Um, you know, like, if the little ones, we just have the one, I think if you can leave both sides, probably your coach before, don't you think?
Yeah. So you don't think we did the.
You can, I think you still do an over the top.
But we just, so, do we want to do the tenner on the bottom again, or are we just looking at?
You could, if you need to have a fence in the front, but like how before, you could go around this side, or you can go this side.
I mean, in the backside, do we want to just keep a fence, or do we want to do like it was before?
I don't think do a, yeah, and just do a rope, just like those new ones are.
Um, that's, that's good.
Then it's wide open. Walk that dugout behind the fence, or where it is right now?
I guess it's, what do you think? I think where the fences are, you just build a big roof over both of them, what is that, about twelve feet span?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
That is about twelve, because we put some canopies up there.
Do you have to replace the whole fence though?
No, he was just gonna replace just the back one, I think they had, they only. Is a pro one calling up to support a roof, do you know?
Um, I think the poles are too small, we'd have to put in.
Like, have bigger ones?
Yep.
Yeah.
Right now, well, how it sits right now, I've got the fence being replaced behind the dugout, that's already been approved, and I've already talked to the fence company, and they're gonna try and get it done this fall. So I'll, I'll have to get ahold of that guy, and put stuff together to work on that front fence. And then would you want fence on the sides, you know, have like, like a little opening to walk through, and then fence the sides, or would that be still, be metal or whatever?
Do you have a fence?
I mean, I would, I would say maybe on the north side, just for foul balls, kind of.
Oh, yeah.
Screen into, you know, you know, like it, like it was, you know, make a.
Okay.
Path to walk through and then. I don't know about the other.
And then just put up those fences, and it would leave the, leave the south side open completely?
Yeah, yeah, I think the south side stays open.
Okay.
Well, is there anything else on baseball when season's over?
Not that I know of, but this time, I mean, we might have to still figure out, like, where, are you like, is there a process with the people that are wanting to redo that field?
Uh, we're still on the application part, on that.
Cause I think if we're not going to, then I need to get with John, and we gotta do something about it, like, sure.
I would think that would be a small project, you know.
Yeah, and then.
I would, I would definitely.
You just don't want to go and spend money or do all this, and you're gonna tear it all up and redo something.
I, I don't see that project that we're working on with Bob being for another, probably two to three years, about you, Pete?
Yeah, I would, I would think, think that mound happened now, because I don't foresee any work to be done if I still first public.
Okay, okay, that would be the only thing, is just that mound. Um, cause it's gonna get very, very, uh, complicated this next year with, uh, fall softball. They were going to take over that North Field in Brooks, so we are gonna be kind of down the field, so it's gonna get really hairy.
Do we have a map, we got that, cover it?
Well, we need to get a map.
I mean, we should have, yeah, I don't know if you want us to do it, or.
Well, maybe, maybe we should just kind of like.
I think the city, the city should pay for it.
I think so too.
But I think if we get John, who has kind of done that mound, cause I've never done it, he, we don't know.
I don't know anything about the mounds either, actually, or.
But I think if we just get out there, kind of look at it before this winter, see what needs to be done, and then kind of take it from there, and, I mean, on a fall, I mean, it will help too, but.
I think if you can get the work done this fall, it'd be better, because school balls aren't like before the snow even comes off the field.
I know.
Yeah, that's fine, it's kind of fine, because, so I guess it comes down to as soon as the country people get out there.
Mm-hmm.
I'll talk to John, and then Pete will chat with you, and then ensure Colby, you kind of know, if you think so.
John's my man, really.
So, otherwise, yeah, it was a good season, so. We'll get Harry next year.
Which fields though?
The North Field would be taken over by softball, because of that same shit.
Oh, I'll do that.
For high school, and so they will be playing, um, on that North Field, and they have a lot of practices, and they have a league.
Oh, that's beautiful.
Mm-hmm, it is, but when you have seventeen other teams trying to make the field, you know, I mean, if we could get life on those little fields, that'd be a game changer. Because, um, if you can get life on those little fields, I can do double headers on them, right now, we're only be able to get one game on there a night. I said that to the city of Crooks too, if we could get life on that South Field, that's another game changer. Cause right now, um, there is some things on the table in Crooks to have a fourplex built there, um, that is a go, there is a family that is on the table talking, they're working out fields. Um, so it's going to help, but it also might hurt Colby. So if we want to keep these kids playing, we might need to start looking at what we can do up here to keep some of these fields occupied. Cause they're gonna do a high school, a Tina Field, and then we're gonna do a league and softball. And this, this, uh, series, like, deal, I was on some, I was having on the conversation, so it's. Just, just anything for that.
Yeah. Sure.
On the pool, on the pool. Um, so, the pool committee, um, we met, Riley and Jazz came down and we spoke with Mike Terry, he had some, wanted to talk about some things, wasn't quite sure about certain things, so kind of walked through. Um, he's kind of wanting to help, which is kind of nice, I have another baby, um, Ricky Goss, she's been asking a lot of questions about it. Uh, she's actually asked about the development, because she wants to purchase one, um, but she wants to stick around, she's got a small child, so she's interested in what we can do at the pool, so. Getting more talks out there, so hopefully in the next year, so we can start running again with that. Um, we only got fifty-one dollars and like thirty-two cents on Sunday. Last year, we only got thirty-one dollars, four up. Um, I haven't told the Country Day Committee, but after seeing the numbers that like you guys get for that day, um, and what I get for that school committee, I don't see it really justice. So, next year, I won't be recommending that, it's gonna be free swim for donation. We were making a couple hundred dollars, where it was like, what you guys were normally, I would be like, keep pushing it further. It's just pocket change and pocket change, it's not getting me anywhere. So, um, yeah, I'm gonna move the money over to Reli Bank here, I'm gonna stop down and talk to the banker. Um, keep it local, so if anybody's ever asking, they know where it's at, let them steal it, um, it's still there, all of it, so. That's it on the pool. And all, and thank you very much.
Good job, buddy.
Yeah.
I think I'm, all right?
I think we've got time here.
It's for you into the council now?
There's only room for one, by the end.
All right, any more on public time, who do you have, who else had? Okay, we'll move on to minutes.
I made the motion approved, deliver.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Got a motion from Colby to approve. I get a second.
I'll second it.
Joe with second, all's in favor?
All right.
All right, move on to claims. Kind of going a little bit odd order, but. Any question on claims at all?
Um, on the next, uh, after the claims list itself, there are invoices that need to be approved.
Yeah, we'll get to those from.
Okay, I didn't know if that's included in the claims list or not.
Okay, no, this is just there.
What was the city that built the Colton Lumberyard deal?
That one for the Colton Lumberyard, that was for, it was a.
That's a pole for the sign that got rolled over, sorry about that.
Okay.
Okay.
So you just had them haul it for you, or you just haul it and put it under Colton Lumberyard, or?
Um, I, we just bought, uh, six bags for three trees post.
Oh, this is practical material, okay.
Yeah. Four and nine, put it on the ground, and the sign itself was okay, it was just the pole was burnt, or busted off at the ground.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
I'm off to the ban. Second.
I'll second.
Second, okay, that's all in favor. Full second, huh? All right, so we're gonna move on to Banner. So this is sanitary study. Cause I'm coming up. You were kind of a part of this too, weren't you, there, Pete, with Banner on this sanitary study, sewer study?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so basically, what, what this is, is the city of Hartford's putting in a water treatment facility plant out kind of, all the east of town, it's gonna be outside of the interstate. Kind of by where that, uh, gravel pit or whatever is that. With Z-Box, we got a Z-Box, but. Zachariah.
Zachariah, yeah.
Yeah. So, big bass, like, the city of Humboldt, and the city of Crooks, and the city of Lyons, and the city of Holts, come in and still a couple meetings. Just got, you know, what it would look like for us, or for them, or anybody to tie onto the regional wastewater facilities, what they're calling it. We've been a couple meetings with them, Banner's been involved with numbers, so, honoring, um. So basically, where we're at now is, you kind of want, we're at a point right now where it'd be like a soft commitment, for whether we're real, willing to go forward. Or still kind of like, nah, this ain't really for us right now, so. The thing I struggle with is, well, money was not an option, this is the operator, we have some that would just dump on this, but, you know, it's, in order. Application just for the plant itself, for us to allow, to bring, or to put our stuff to their plant, just our allocation for the plant is, is, you know, seven hundred, fifty thousand dollars, would be our portion of the plant.
Pete, this is, this is just that sewer studying they did for that wastewater manag, like, not the wastewater management, this is that bill from Banner. That we're going over, you probably don't have the minute, or the agenda, but.
I don't, I don't have.
Okay, we'll go, we're gonna go to that one here, this is just for the, the Banner, when we did the sewer study, with that sewer man.
Okay. Oh, sure, yep, I got you on.
Yep, no.
On bright taste. But that was more or less just, uh, you know, for the lining project, uh, shoe elevation, looking at that hole. I think we incorporated some of that stuff in, put that redevelopment to the east of town.
Yep.
And then, uh, what we're saying, uh, as it sits right now, the way, the way we're looking, is that we can incorporate that investment development into our sewer system, and it should be okay.
Okay. This is for that clean water, that's going on, too, so. Like, we got a motion to approve this thing. Well, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and twenty cents. Motion from Colby, second. All's in favor, yeah, all's full, same time, okay. All right, Pete, we're just gonna keep, we're gonna kind of go through everything with you here, so we can get you off the phone, so.
Yeah.
Um, we've got double H paving, pretty self-expensive, we kind of approved this before, we just, invoices came in now, so. Is there anything you need to add on that, Pete?
I don't, uh, I guess I thought that turned out better than what I thought it was gonna be, uh, that street really looks nice.
Yeah, it did, turned out pretty good. I got the motion on these, you can do both invoices at once if you want to.
Do you get a motion?
Okay, from Chaz, second.
I'll second.
Second from Joe, all's in favor. All's fine. All right, street sweeper. Op Ham, inspection.
Yeah, that was a contract, you know, we brought in the two, they did a really good job, it just, bad timing, like winds and rains and stuff, you know, they got lost, the streets got really wet. As far as the work they did, I was super happy with it. As far as the work they did, I was super happy with it.
Yeah, well, I can imagine what would have happened if the winner had it done though too, so.
Oh, right, yep.
There's only one on me.
The ones, yeah, there's only ones.
Oh.
I also, the, the other one's a statement for the whole thing.
Oh, okay.
They're the same total, but they were, they came together, so that's why I put them together.
I'm sorry. Put it back. Alright, get a motion to approve that invoice. Motion from Kobe. Second from Dan, all's in favor. Alright, we're gonna move on. Okay, we're gonna move on to the waste water treatment plant there. Now you can kind of, we can ask you some questions on that.
Okay, did Weston call in or not?
No, no, he didn't, not yet.
I don't, I don't think he, I tried calling in the regular number and you can't get to the conference call, so not what it, I had to go through the, the work phone number to get to the conference call. So you probably can't call the conference call.
Oh.
But, um, so yeah, we'll start out again with, you know, the fact that, like I said, if money wasn't an option, it was a no-brainer. But it comes down to the dollars and, you know, can we justify the seven hundred fifty thousand for the plant allocation and then, uh, they've got, you know, two point three million to do the pipeline supporting down to that facility. Now, some of that will be cost shared with Crook and Lyons, but, uh, if, if they go forward with it. But Weston thought that that was gonna be a little, little weak. He, he thinks there's gonna be more than that, or cost more than that at that pipe down.
Yeah.
So the, the real reason why you want to do all of the facility like this, or we'd want to tie onto a facility would be, you know, if we would want to bring in businesses that are gonna have wastewater that's a little more strong, or a little stronger than what a normal household would, would have. You know, so that would be one reason that why you want to have a mechanical plant. Um, the second reason is, and we don't know where this, where this is gonna go yet or not, but then our new permit, now we're, we're testing for soft strength and, uh, oh, there's a, not ammonia, but nitrate. So that's, that's something I have to test for now when I discharge. I don't, there's no limit on it. It could be whatever it is. But that tells me that in, you know, ten years, they're gonna put a limit on that product. Um, and make the two products that they're doing, they're gonna have a heart attack getting out of them. So hopefully, when I discharge the first time and I, I can get a feel for what, what that number is, and I hope. But that would be the second reason why you'd want to. Well, there are other options, just a mechanical plant, you know, we talked about it already with like that stagger system. We could go that route. We wouldn't have to do the plant thing, so. I'm just throwing it out to you guys where our commitment is or what you guys, how you guys feel. I mean, is this something that we'd want to keep moving forward with? Cause like I said, the city of Hartford wants kind of a soft commitment, you know, whether we're willing to do this or we're kind of like, nah, maybe this isn't for us right now at this time. Now, they did say also that, you know, in fifteen years or whatever, if, if we get a facility that comes in and they're gonna give us some kind of treated, untreated water that we can't, we can't deal with it, we can tag onto their plant at that time, but it's gonna cost us a lot more. Cause the way they're setting the plant up is, 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 it's set up for expansion, so if they even come in in fifty years and say, hey, we want to spend now some water or whatever, they can add onto the plant. It's built for that, but it's gonna be at more of a cost to us.
Yeah.
Uh, what's your guys' feelings?
Well, I think.
Where, where we at?
We need to have discussion. I mean, we need to start planning out because, I mean, if this, uh, development does take off, we, we're gonna be pretty limited to if we want any other new businesses or bigger facilities to come in, so.
Right.
We have to start exploring options and this is just an option.
Yep.
What's their time bringing on this?
Well, they kind of want, uh, hard, our soft commitment here on just reading.
September and October, isn't it?
Yeah, September and October is when they want to kind of know, okay, you guys are still, now let's sit down and let's really crunch some numbers and really, let's figure out what this is gonna cost, you know? Cause right now we've just got soft numbers, you know, like Weston said, that two, two something million to put that pipe down, or he didn't think that was enough. It's gotta be more than that. You know, when it, what's that gonna do for the, for our sewer rates? You know, obviously that's gonna drag them up. And if we go off on a state water plant for this project, you know, it'll probably give us a pretty good portion of it, but then we're trying to figure out how to cover the rest of it, you know?
Yeah.
Kind of like we just did with this last project.
Didn't you say too, the, the, kind of exploring with the county?
Yeah, we are trying to talk to the county to see if they did some of the Harper ones to come in. And what makes the project really look good in the eyes of the, the state people, hopefully the county people, that have got multiple towns trying to do one thing, you know, so they get a little more bang for their buck.
Yeah.
Well, at the end of the day, it still comes down to the old pay the dollar. Is it feasible right now for the city of Holton to, to commit to this?
Yeah, cause didn't, uh, didn't Weston run the numbers? What were roughly thinking if we did jump on this with, you know, really no num-, no factual grant dollars? What, what was that sewer increase gonna be?
Yeah, it's way down at the last page, uh, attachment number three. If you go, flip through your packet to that, it'll show me what the breakouts are for all the towns. If you go to Colton and then go over to the right, it gives you your capital plant investment and then your infrastructure investment. And then they're assuming, you know, your S R F grant assumption, what's, what we're thinking we'd get for grants. And that, and then it shows at the bottom there what your total rate impact per service would be. And then numbers are pretty high, but. So, if you guys are seeing that, that's kind of the breakdown. That's how it sits right now. You know, I, I think if we're gonna be real with this, we gotta get a little closer on the numbers.
Yeah.
Well, there's like three options or whatever there, you know, good, better, best, type deal. Well, good, you know, you're looking at twenty-five dollars raise per service, uh, better is twenty-two dollars, and then you got your best, which is nineteen dollars. And that's gonna be depending on your funding package.
I just don't know how we go about raising rates again. I know. I know.
You know, it's, that's where I'm at. It, it's like I said when I started, it's, it's, if money was not an option, it'd be a no-brainer, but maybe, I don't know, maybe right now it's not, like, frankly, definitely not.
Uh, did they give a?
Time frame of how long that would be on our bill?
That I don't know.
Ten years? Ten years.
No, that other, well, we talked about that other, um, option. Um, I was gonna remind me, I can't, it's on the different, yeah. What, what was our cost when, at that time when we were looking at that? You remember?
It was in a billion and, uh, I don't.
I wanna say it was like round two, wasn't it?
What that?
It was around that, at one point five to two, or something like that?
Yeah, I wanna say it was just under two. Don't quote me on the numbers, but. It was somewhere in there.
And then there's probably, honestly, there's probably no grants for that then.
Oh, I was, there should, you should be able to go off for the same grant.
You can sell. Okay. But.
The biggest thing with that would be the, the price, getting the property. We, we, in order to put that stagger system in, we needed to get like twenty acres of land. We gotta buy that land from whoever right around that lagoon that's very good. Really gotta try and get the land from the property. That's, that's probably gonna be your topic part.
So theoretically, we're probably gonna be looking at the same numbers altogether, outside of them.
Yeah, it, it, I think it'd be pretty close. I mean, I think it'd be a little bit higher going to Hartford, because they're gonna have to, you know, when we send fifty gallon of wastewater to the Hartford, there's gonna be a fee for that, you know?
Yeah, what was it, about, let me see, two, two thousand a month? Something like that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, two thousand a month. So. Well, it's something that we gotta at least discuss, discussing now.
What's your guys' thoughts on that? Do you wanna, like, you guys wanna sit down with Weston and maybe the engineer for Harper and just kind of have a, a, a meeting with everybody and just kind of go over it?
Yeah, I think we need to.
Is that something you guys would be interested in, or, or are we like, nah, maybe the thing's the right time for us and we wanna be, done with it?
Well, I mean, I don't, I think it's foolish to ignore it. I mean, I think we need to at least have discussions on it and with noise, say no to it at a later time too, here. We don't have too much time left. We only got, what? One more month?
I think if we get some more accurate numbers on, on both options to make a decision like this.
Okay.
You're not gonna get accurate numbers out of me. I'm telling you about, he's gonna tell you what you want to hear.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, I, hey, when I talk, I listen to the engineer at Hartford and I go to Weston and I'm like, okay, what's the, what's the real story, you know?
Well.
So maybe, maybe we need to have a little, I don't know, what you call it, special meeting, or maybe it is a special meeting, but everybody needs to sit down with Banner and we, we could kind of go through the numbers.
Well, it's part of options.
Cause we really need to make a decision one way or another. Is this what we're gonna do or not gonna do? We could, they need to know, you know, they need to, for copper, when they're building that plant, are they gonna build it big enough for us now or not, you know?
Yep. Yeah. Well, let's talk when, we'll set, maybe set something up with Weston and we'll get a special meeting going.
Yeah, that sounds good. And then we'll, I'll talk with Weston about, you know, maybe having, if he can find, refine these numbers a little bit, that'd be great. Um, I would kind of look at his numbers for that stagger system. We kind of know what that's gonna be, and then we can kind of make a decision from there.
Okay. Alright.
Everybody okay with that?
I'm good with that. Um, let's go back to Pete. Um, do you have anything for parks and recs? About tree removals?
Just the pool, pool's gonna be closed on thirteen Saturdays, so that's gonna be the end of the year for that. I've tried to get rid of that tree guy. I have, I got a call back going up. I don't have a full ton of waste gonna haul for these trees. I think we'll push that to next month.
Okay. We got one tree in the park that's bound together. I said we got one tree in the park that's bound together right now.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Um, we'll just move on. Public Works, anything for you with Public Works?
Nothing really there.
Okay.
You guys have anything for me?
Don't. Um, since I got you here, um, that sewer damage with that Teresa Bailey?
Yep.
So I know our, our insurance united saying it was no fault. You wanna kind of give some insight? You were dealt with that over there. I know she's just looking at for some cost recoup on some of the stuff?
Yeah, that was, uh, I got called over there. Larry Vanderwood was in the basement working on the water was coming up. They'd have got a couple old batteries wet apparently. Um, I pulled the manhole at the, at the tree. There was a big plug. It was like baby white, then the flushable white that really aren't flushable, but they say they are. So that, that was what plugged the sewer up. So as soon as I removed that plug, it was like a foot long. It filled up, pretty much filled up the whole five gallon tail. Then that, that water took off and the line was full back up and it was working properly again. So we turned it into an insurance company and the insurance company called me, asked me a bunch of questions about, do we clean our line? You know, I said, yeah, every couple years we got a ton of rotation to bring in another order of river. And they wanted to get her down the line, clean it, blah, blah, blah. But he said, why, do you guys do some maintenance on your sewer system? He said, we're not gonna stand behind that. It's gonna be a no fault or whatever. So that kind of went back from that.
And she's claiming that she did, she did not put any flushable whites down, which I don't know where, where it came from.
Yeah, well, you know, it's like five houses on that line, it could be a big problem. They, they always say that, that the maintenance would be behind your sewer system. So I, I don't know. In the past, I know the council has had this issue before. They, they go out of their way and, and take the homeowner a few dollars to you know, slap what it was top dead, and cow or something, get wet in the basement, then help the bottom, you know, a hundred dollars at the top or whatever.
Yeah. Well, and I know, I talked to her over the phone and, uh, she's not looking for everything reimbursed. She said the city would just throw up, you know, a certain dollar amount just to replace some of the mattresses. She'd be fine with that. So I said, I talked to council, leave that to you guys. I mean, that's your discussion on that. Um, now that you guys kind of got the story behind it.
So this was technically a sewer backup?
Yep. Yeah, it was a sewer backup.
So. She's, this is what she emailed me, cause I had her to email me, cause she's like, well, just, just, you guys just throw me a amount. I said, well, I need a, I need an amount. You gotta tell me what you feel you have into it, and then we can go from there. So she came up with fourteen inch memory foam mattress at six hundred and eighteen dollars. Uh, two and, two fourteen inch extended twin mattresses at three nine, or three sixty-nine each, that so equals seven thirty-eight. And then dumped to the sp- disposed twenty-five cleaning supplies, seventy-five, four hours of cleaning, a hundred lost day work, two eighty-eight. She's not looking for the lost day work, cleaning supplies, or any of the, just, she's just looking at the mattresses, so.
Are they using the mattresses?
She said the one that they used was, they went into their camper and all that all the time. So you guys can have a kind of discussion on that. If you have any more questions on Pete with that. Otherwise, we can let Pete go.
Yeah, that, it's a crap shoot where they put the flushable white down that system. They catch down everything. And they don't break down like they say they do. You know, they say they're flushable and they break down in the line. I dig, every month I go into the list station, the check valve, that pump. So when the pump shuts off, it doesn't drain the line all the way from the, the pipes all the way back into the wet well. And every month I gotta go in there, pull the valves apart, dig all, sit out of there. It, it's all flushable white. You know, they're not, they're not flushable, so someone said they're flush, flushable white down, they probably need to stop them because it's, I wish it would catch in their service line, but then they have to dig the service line up. But it does, somehow it always gets out of our system, but it probably is fully managed for us, so.
Does homeowners cover anything like that?
Well, I don't know.
I mean, it would make more sense to cover deductible for the inconvenience versus.
I mean, we could look and talk about how we can give you some money for your deductible.
Yeah.
Well, it's my questions of the lawyer. Are we, are we liable for it?
We're not liable to report the lawyer, that's what he told me.
Right, you're setting a precedent.
Yes.
Right, yeah.
It works a very slippery slope. Be really careful.
Because towels and it was a hundred bucks. Oh. This time it's whatever, two thousand dollars.
Seventeen hundred dollars in mattresses.
Next time if it's a whole bunch of electronics stuff and it's fifty thousand dollars, you're gonna come in and do, we're gonna pay everybody else for it.
How about a beautiful furniture? No. Right.
Say, where did she have these mattresses? Put them on their way.
On the floor.
Put them on the floor, lay them on concrete or not often.
Right.
And wrap it up, toss a bag like your storage would be. And wrapping up, plus a bag like your storage would be.
I feel that we've been doing our maintenance, we've been doing what we should be. We're not liable for any of that.
And yet, there would be insurance, would the, the replacement cost, or would they do?
Because I, I just have that on my policy, 'cause it's, I had to revise it, 'cause it was like.
What are those, those matches worth if they're, um, starting?
Yeah, they were sale value, or they?
She said they were a few years old, so.
Yeah.
Here's the deal, if you got a mattress, you got it laying on the floor in your basement, you really don't want that mattress, right?
You're not hauling it out of your basement to go camping.
So why would you put it on the floor that's gonna wet, and you don't get wet, and have bugs crawling around on it?
Is it finished basement, or is it just a?
I think some, I think half of that, I don't know, basement, that's, half of it's empty. Yeah, half, half there is half on it.
What's Hall and Bedderhouse, house on the highway? Who's house?
Uh, over by there on Fifth Street.
Oh, gotcha. That'd be Mager's old house, Mager's old house?
Uh, it'd be right across from the band name department, so the, you know where Harper lives?
Yeah.
It'd be the first house to the west, and the things that are there.
Where you buy the Masonic Hall between.
Gotcha, yeah, the Brown, the, the Brown House.
Yes, yep, yep.
Yep, yep. I'm gonna make a motion not to approve that. If we have to make a motion, I'm gonna make it not to approve. Only for the basis of, word, like you said, we're setting precedents if anybody's sewer that backs up anything.
I'll second that.
Yeah, all those in favor?
Uh.
One, good. Um, all right, is there anything else you wanna add, Pete?
I think that's all I got, I guess.
Okay, I'm just trying to go through here. I don't see anything else that we really.
I'm gonna send you a couple of video, or a couple of pictures of that backup, probably, to show the council.
Okay. Okay.
Come to you, but yeah, uh, basically what it is, so, I just, it's, uh, I don't know how you stop it, so. That's an eight inch, eight inch sewer made.
You guys wanna pass it out?
All, all, you're looking at eight inch, even diameter.
Anybody else? That, that'd be happy. I'm sorry, Pete, you had to go through that.
Don't, don't worry, I put my rubber gloves on, so we're good.
I would've been putting a different ones on, too.
You know, when I first started here, the first about six months, I was sick as a dog, for every day, and it's just like, you sell stuff to these superhuman bodies, but now I never get sick.
Well, if you wanna listen in, Pete, you can, if you need to go, I know you're out west fighting fires, so.
Yeah, we're gonna, I'll probably let you go, we're gonna take a fire, we're out here a couple hours, so make sure it's still full.
Okay.
Some, uh, someone thought they dragged out on the highway with a flat tire on a rim, thinking that it's, that's, that's the right thing to do, or started about the flat tire along the highway. We've been chasing them all day.
All righty, well, thanks, Pete, so.
All right, you guys.
You guys stay safe.
Thank you, we'll talk to you later.
See ya. We'll move on. Monty, you wanna do a fire?
Uh, we've been calling fire departments, uh, just, we're gonna have to report, three fires, three EMS calls in March of July. And we had, uh, members of activities preparing for, and going through, country aids. That fire wasn't chilling, it went off. Probably won't.
That was a good, good show.
Lunch was wonderful, I do love the organization of the, the blacks to go, and the music, and have it so. People weren't standing outside for hours.
Do you feel you guys did, do good on the drive-through, or is it kind of a, you feel like you get the same donations as people come in and sit down?
Yeah, did real well.
Did you?
It was better than, I was the one that was critical about it.
Yep.
Pretty good tabs and that. It turned out better than I had expected, on the drive-through, so we'll continue doing that. Uh, it's purely for those that wanna get a lot, take it home to a family, those who got a whole family gathering, and, and they don't wanna sit down at a table, they wanna take it home to you, so. They do well, and I think they just understand when they come through. It's a bit fun.
Yeah, it's gone to a good cost, so.
We did very well supporting them.
What'd you guys end up with the final count?
Uh, the final count of people would be just short of a thousand.
Oh.
Well, over nine hundred, please, on the drive-throughs.
That's good. So you count, you, you're just counting people, not sandwiches?
Correct.
Yeah, good. A lot of people.
If you have any questions, we're here, we'll be prepared for budget later this month.
Yep, we're gonna, we're gonna discuss that, uh, special, that, so.
That is sound.
Okay.
And then you need that as well.
All right, thanks, Monty.
Thanks, Monty.
All right, sheriff's report, a couple of things unpacked with that sheriff's report here. Well, one, just tells the hours.
Right here, you got a couple more, a couple more down there. Should be a couple before your claims, too.
It should be right after the minute.
There you go.
There we go.
So this just shows the control time. We have no control over it whatsoever, but just kinda shows what they're going in and out there, um. And we'll move on to, there's a ton down there, Seth. So we got an invoice on our claim for fire. Uh, the third quarter, July through September, hundred and ninety-five hours, thirty-six dollars and ninety-five cents per hour. That's about seventy thousand, two hundred and five dollars, twenty-five cents. Which would try to give me a motion for this one, too. Give me a motion to prove on that one.
Has their rates been pretty fair, or have they raised?
Well, that's our next thing, they gotta rate, and we're supposed to go to next after this, so. So, give me a motion, motion to prove on this. Motion for Kobe, second.
Second.
Julie, second, all those in favor? Yeah, all things, all the same. Great, all right, now, where'd that one go with the rate, Seth, is that up to the front there?
Uh, it's after the, the. The Del Rapid one. And it's after the, the shirt one.
Oh, after the shirt one?
Yeah, it's, it's in there.
Okay.
I kept them in, after, I kept you going after the Dells.
You skipped just. Oh, there it is, okay, so this is our cost increase. Not much we can do on that.
For next year.
Next year, yep.
Yep, they're increasing their rates by three dollars, so.
Hey, we got a pistol somewhere buried in it.
I haven't found it yet, but I'm looking for it.
Is Pete still on?
He knows about it.
You know, we probably could, for thirty-one thousand dollars.
Well, really, probably as well, we could.
Yeah.
Ah, probably not, yeah, and then steel cost and driving them around.
You get more, and insurance, and yeah.
Oh, yeah. That's great.
You gotta be someone who's like military in the fifties, and really work.
Yeah. Here's your bullet, Barney. So.
Instead of one of those electric scooters, just have him go, driving around in the golf cart.
Yeah.
I, for customers, they show up in Florida, so regular.
Probably gonna get that. All right, so not much we can do on that one, but. Um, so let's just keep going down the page here, and present resolution, what resolution number would that be, Seth? What are we on?
That'd be number eight.
This is the South Dakota Transportation Grant that we're filing, so alternative, we'll kinda talk about that, we're doing Main Street and, uh, um, sidewalks. So this is kind of our four to five-year plan for going after this money, we just have to have a resolution. To go after the grant. Which I think our maximum, you said, is sixty percent, that's all, okay, so. Which I doubt we'll get that lucky, but we'll see, and up to six hundred thousand. But. So if we get a motion to this resolution. Move forward with this grant.
Want to make a motion?
Motion for Chad. Second from Diane, all those in favor? I, all those in poll, same sign. Okay, so then, let's just go down, we'll finish this, okay, Sudan libraries, I'll let you kinda talk about this, Seth, they kinda, well, we've kind of already talked about this before, I guess, but we came back and revisited, Seth. That, they wanna put that card reader back on. Um, so we need to look into a door. I guess a construction door, mystery door, commercial door.
Industrial business locking door.
Yep. We wanna look into that, continue. Wanna table that for a while.
They're just looking.
I say, I never looked into what they were supposed to get me, what they wanted, what it was all, what the lock actually was.
I'm, I don't know, they sent, they only told me industrial business, locking door.
I'm guessing probably like a hollow metal frame door, hollow door, I'm guessing, I don't know. But I guess like business, they need to do that.
I'll swing, but then does that have the, from inside, the exit bar?
No, panic device.
The panic device, plus, is it single bore, how's it set up for?
Yeah. Yeah, we probably need, maybe, we'll just table it for now, and we'll just ask them for a little bit more information on what they need on that.
I tried calling her Friday and today.
She didn't answer.
No, I got nothing.
Okay. Um. I'm gonna go back up to, we'll go back up to you, Seth, here, let you do it. City administration, we're kind of all over, let's just try to. Try to get, uh, Pete off the phone.
Okay, um, so, um, I was talking, I, the city hall's been having problems making long-distance phone calls. And I was talking to our IT and Golden West IT, and they're telling me how our setup is, we, all of our, the, the water tower line, this line, and the pool line are all, all converge. And it's basically a random chance for whichever line you chose to make the call, and I've been, it's now, that's how it was told to me. I don't know how that makes, how it works, I'm not gonna claim I know how it works, but it, he was telling me, that's how it works, and I've just been, oh, it's now, all my, when I make a phone call from the city hall. It says, it says it's coming from the pool, and I can't make long-distance phone calls, so I can't call out to peer and talk to Department of Revenue, who I've been and stuff like that, 'cause I've needed to reach out to them a couple times, and even, I can't, I've had to use my cellphone to do that. As, if I need to make a long-distance phone, phone call, I have to use my phone, my cellphone for that. And there is three, um, things that they said they could do, is one, get a new, um, conductor, or conductor box, which is two hundred and fifty dollars. And then have the city, like, hall line just run through that by itself, and then that'll get rid of the problem. We could get, um, long-distance calling on the city, on the, uh, pool, and on the water tower, which, um, I was talking to the sales rep, but they wouldn't tell me anything because I wasn't authorized on the account, and then neither was Jared, so that's a, that's a whole, we, I sent him a letter, um, with, with the city in the hall, um, Heather and all that, saying that to remove Heather and, um, two mayors ago, I think it was Eric Miller? Yeah, and off of those ones, so, and to put Jared and myself on there as authorized ones, so, and I haven't heard anything back from him yet. And then the third option was, it was, um, a SIG tap or something like that, 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 that's what, um, RIT recommended we maybe do, and that's, I, I have no idea what that is, is, I've tried calling him to get back to him, he hasn't called him back, so.
With the pool, do they, they have to have a phone at the pool, or do they put cameras?
I don't know if they need to put cameras, but it's all wifi with the cameras.
Cause I know that there was a separate line for, they had a phone there at one time, like a handset phone. Couldn't we cancel that line? Would that help the problem?
Yeah, I could, I'd probably.
So I think we wanna, we need some sort of emergency line down at the pool.
Oh, yeah, or they.
We don't wanna rely on, uh, I don't wanna, wanna put that in.
Half the time, that phone never worked. You couldn't hear on it, you couldn't.
Well, maybe we'll have them look, look into what's going on down at the pool.
The phone wouldn't ring in.
Well, 'cause Monty, you said the same thing's going on with the fire hall, right?
Right, but that's all midco.
That's midco down there?
That's not cool, that's, it's all computer driven out of here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But RIT, we said, we, most of the, most of the switches was good.
Yeah.
Because, because in the wintertime, they cut that phone line up, but they just continue to serve us.
Did they?
They do have a line. Or Heather said that did anyway, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know.
I wonder how the city's set up for our monthly billing, 'cause basically if you're tied into their system, they're supposed to support the system. We shouldn't have to buy a box, it should be on there, to upgrade their service.
Yeah. So. I would kinda, maybe play a little hardball with them.
Okay, I'll try. I haven't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll pass it, I'll see what.
Yeah.
I'll see what they say.
See what they come back with.
Yeah.
Cause I would bet you now, that that phone is not put down at the pool, that handset, that land.
Yeah, but you just could always ask Ace if it's been working.
Should have had them working down there.
Yeah.
There's a line there, and we got what's happening.
Call like Monty said, the one down at the fire hall's kind of pointless, because they don't wanna, they can't have a computer base when power goes out.
When you call, do you call the number that book gets you wall IT, or?
Um, I call the, the number on the bill for, and then, and then night, then you choose to what IT supports you go.
Yeah, so you're talking to somebody in wall, um, if you don't mind, um, I mold that lot and I have for ten years over there, and I talk to Dave London all the time, and if you don't mind, I can shoot him an email, just.
Yeah, if you wanna, just.
I mean, if that's okay with you.
That's fine, you know, uh, something to try, get some more answers with it, cause, you know.
Yeah.
Then to get back to me.
I think you should look into where that phone system came from, that just showed up during COVID. I think it was a midco system, you don't have phone loss system.
Yeah, mine, mine not even be.
Yeah, 'cause our system at CHS is midco and a phone line bill.
Yeah, so we bought them phones for that COVID money.
Whenever you started using the phone, three, or the push one, push two, push three, which is a joke, but that's how I hold my system.
Okay.
Well, with internet driven, that's what I believe in, I have a phone loss, I'm just using that phone number.
Okay, um.
If you can wait to dial, but you could put, I think it's three to get the pool, it's the same city hall number, but push number three.
Okay, so that must be what the issues were, calling the pool then.
I think that's, yeah, I think that's what quit working us, but I had to come here, and then I got distributed internet over there. And that's, so we, at the fire station, we just pay our own phone bill for the phone loss.
Call, just see if that system's even compatible with what's going on, because I'd have to come out instead of just, tell them to come out instead of just looking or pumping over the phone.
Okay. Golden West.
Golden West, but we bought those phones during that COVID money, so like, like I said, they might not even. I don't know, see what's going on there, I guess.
Yeah. I'll look through it, through it. Then, um, next thing was just the live streaming and recordings update, um, last week, um, last Friday, when I was looking at the. We had a hundred and three views for that, uh, city council with this la, the recording. So I just wanted to bring that up, where a hundred, you know, a hundred and three people watched it, you know. I watched it a couple in the right minutes, so, you know. But yeah. I just thought I'd bring that up and tell you how it was going, and, um, the city council, or the Colton City, um, what, uh, YouTube page has got four subscribers. That means four people get a notification when we go live, myself is one of them, so. But that, that was just, you know, tell you the numbers on that.
All these people are using it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think it's good.
Well, that's good for them to go back to.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's nice, yeah.
Go back to minutes.
It's very nice for that. So that was it, it with that, and then, um, the next thing is, um, I'm requesting some time off. The, uh, Wednesday the tenth, Thursday the eleventh, and Friday the twelfth. I've got enough hours in comp time and vacation time to cover it.
Oh, I think initially, you want to just, maybe you just post something up prior, saying that you, you business need to be conducted. Good there.
That's all my bits.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna talk about, uh, the Colton Economic Development Group, so just kind of get you guys to speed on that. We've been meeting pretty regularly to get that application in for South Dakota Housing, which we got submitted last Friday. Um, I don't know how many meetings we've gone through, Friday, every Sunday, and like Wednesdays, and.
Yep.
Um, we figured out max that we're granted, that we can get is one point three million dollars, is what we're going for, so we'll know. Uh, just got an email back today, they said, just last week, twenty-three million dollars was already passed for, so we'll see. Where we fall into that, or who gets it. Yeah, and I know it's a first come, first served kind of basis, um, but we should, I hope we should fall pretty steadily into that category. The numbers add up with what it's gonna cost, or lots, price for lots, and then what we needed, so, kind of in that math, that we really need that grant, so. Um, so what I'm asking is, we can set it up a few different ways, I'd like to, since we did three of second penny, we moved. Paid off that bond, which wasn't as much.
It was sixty-one and some change.
Sixty-one, yeah.
Thousand.
Thousand and some change, so we freed off the bonds, free bond, so then we gotta move second penny, which was five hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
Yeah, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand and a hundred and something?
Something, yeah, we gotta move that into our general fund. Um, so I'm asking the council if we can throw some funds at the development corporation on that, to invest. Behind that, since now we have substantial amount of money in the, in the first penny, or not first penny, sorry, general fund, general fund. So the, kind of a different option, I wonder if we can do, like, to buy payments throughout the year, maybe twenty-five thousand. Or if we want to do one month sum of fifty thousand, or if you guys have a certain, another amount that you're, you're looking at. We will be going here shortly, doing some capital funding to, on the development side, and. It's getting noticed on some people, so, do you have one person that already wants to buy five lots? So. Yeah. Well, if you guys have any other questions on that? I don't know anymore, what we're kind of standing at? Does anyone have any concerns about moving funds over?
As long as we got it.
That's it?
As long as we have it.
Yeah, well, and I know, my initial thought is like, I had a certain amount, at first I was like, well, no, we don't, let's not do that, and just. Don't set ourselves up, and that's why I was kind of thinking about buying payment, if we do two payments at twenty-five, we're not really setting that, so we not. We're stating that we'll, we'll make a payment, we're not necessarily committed to the last payment, you know, if something comes up, we're not really hurting ourselves, so we have to, we can back out of it. But this will help, uh, make the interest payment on the land. So, I don't know, if you guys have any other questions on that?
I would definitely do need to invest into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's okay.
So, I mean, if you guys have certain numbers, or if you guys want more money thrown into it, you know.
We can always throw more money in down.
Well, that's kind of why I'm thinking if we just maybe committed to some payments here.
Right.
At least the development corporation kind of knows, you know, there is money coming, I mean, we shouldn't really be spending too much money yet. It's gonna be coming, we'll be spending money, and we're gonna look at tipping it after we find out what happens with this application. Run all our numbers on that.
Who oversees the spending in this other account?
In the, the development?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, right now, it's Scott Amundson and Nate Over, the two treasurers of the development.
Does it report to the city?
It is a board, there's a board that runs it, so it is related to the city, and they normally speak with their, with distinctive.
The Economic Development Corporation.
So the city of Colton is gonna pay for all the development, but they're gonna take all the profit off going into.
But it's a nonprofit that, the authority that it has is economic development for the city.
Well, I watched Hartford go down in that sector.
And they didn't do it right.
I know they didn't do it right, that's why I wanted to understand where the, the accountability comes back to, and what do I, as the public, since I'm watching you guys spend to develop this. And our money, and then free grant one, we just pull out of thin air. Do we, as the public, are we able to oversee this, and make sure it's being managed, so it doesn't happen like Hartford did?
Not directly, it's a corporation, it's not city owned, and its only authority is to promote economic development in the city. I'll tell you right now, we'll be lucky if we make any money on these lots.
Most of the time, these are used for the purpose of developing city property without having to go through the bidding process.
Right, I understand, I understand, I mean, I watched it, almost, almost from inception through Hartford, and then I watched it fall apart.
So, I, I am on the board, I point to Chaz as a council member on the board too, so we do have one city person overseeing, seeing it too.
So you guys all get to vote for the money that goes over there that we don't get to watch? Does that seem like an ethics thing? No?
They can't by themselves, yeah.
We have, we have.
I appreciate that, for all the collateral.
No, I mean, we have, we have eight board members on there, so.
The reason why they're on there more is to.
Right, it's just marriage.
I can, I'll tell you right now, I'm making, that's my part, I just like to sit in and listen, I'm making no motions, not, not on that end, like. My, my part is just, like, I'd just like to soon eventually get off, so, I'm just kind of trying to help get it going.
From an unknowing citizen perspective, just, you have to be.
No.
We watch, people watch the ugly, ugly thing, and it can come back bad, it does feel bad, yeah.
And we are exploring options of, so we have our voting board, and then we are exploring options, we're still trying to decide if we want to do a membership. So you can pay, we're asking five hundred dollars, membership, with the three year membership, but then it's a fifty dollar renewal every year. And we'll have annual meetings. What we're trying to do at that, we're, we're trying that, because that would kind of put us in a check and balance on everything, because at those annual meetings, we can. If we do open it up to that part, the board, or the membership, can vote for members, new members to come on and hold the step off when we're kind of alternating, and we do want a pool to eventually pull from. Uh, board members, or membership, I can say board members, but membership, uh, someone that's, you know, their term's done, now we have a membership, and we can pull someone up, but the board. Or the membership would vote as a whole.
Right.
On that, so we're looking at that option.
Kind of infancy stages.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're exploring, and we're looking at going five oh one C three, and, I mean, we're just really, I mean. I can tell you that all of us are on there for the better of Colton right now, and we're really exploring, trying to figure out what their next best step is to do.
I trust where it's at right now, you watch.
No, and that's why we, we had a, we had a meeting earlier today, and we kind of talked about that. Membership, because it would kind of put, you know, us right now, we know what we are, you know, we'll, we'd get off when it comes, it would put the checking balances in it, so I know we're really kind of thinking about going that route.
Then with the actual members, they're five, five year rate, is it five or three?
Uh, would we, Mike, what do we decide, is it five or three on the men, on the, on the membership, not the board?
No.
I think it's three.
The membership was, then he passed around what used to pay us, whether you want to do five hundred a year, you want to do a hundred a year for five years, or a hundred fifty for three years.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, I guess, answer that question, we have the membership, this is kind of a lifetime deal, you can stay on as long as you pay the fifty dollars a year. But, board members are only three years.
Well, I was gonna, mine's a one year deal, as appointed by the mayor, mine were a one year, so.
Yeah, I could point, Chad again, I could point a new council member at that point, and then, I just did mine, mine's three, I just did my member, because my term is mayor, and so. I can be done altogether with three. Um, I forgot who I'll, I don't have all the other terms, and we have a couple twos, we're in constant location, so.
And I just, the transparency is what I'm most curious about, like, what do I, as the big person watching you transfer Colton funds into this? Do we get to follow that, that money that's coming from Colton? Can we follow that money, do we have access to following that money, and make sure it is being properly spent?
Yeah, I think that's probably something, so, board, we need to, how we want to release, but, I mean, maybe we look at the board releasing our financials, but then that's about it.
I was gonna say, as a corporation, the answer to that would be no.
Yeah.
You wouldn't have to.
Yeah.
But then, but I see, I see what you're saying too, about, because the idea is to develop the community, but yet, it still is a business.
Yeah.
So, like, I think right now, you can't say either way.
We, we really can't.
Because it is so, I mean, I mean, but I see where you're like, I, I, I understand, we all want to know where our money goes in this thing.
We all understand.
Right.
To the three, you know, it's going to the development, because corporations are.
Right.
And then past that, you just have to trust the people on that corporation are using it for that.
No, I, I see, I see your concern on that, I think so, thought food for thought too, like, we're, that's what I'm saying, we're.
Yeah, and if you've got two of you here, it's something that can discuss over on that type thing.
Um, because we've been, the last couple meetings, we've been really discussing on how we want to form up this membership, or we just want to leave it a board and just do capital campaigning, but. We can kind of set the bar at, you know, so if we did do the membership, we would set it at like five hundred dollars, because we really wanted the, the serious people that really want to do good, not just the ones that come and be like, you know, have their influence and then steam, so. If you're really serious about it, you'll.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you'll pay the five hundred dollars. But, no. Something to go back to the board with.
Is that all personal funds, or you get some businesses as well?
So right now, everyone on the board, we all paid our five hundred dollars in, um, where, we haven't really gone after any business or anything funds yet. Like I said, we just don't, we're still new, we don't know exactly what direction we're gonna go. Um, I know we're eventually gonna do some capital campaigning.
Really, the way you're kind of talking about was, the membership is more of a hybrid of a chamber of commerce, kind of, but you have to try to do what you can.
Yeah.
For the, the membership would be more of like a chamber of commerce membership, but baked into the economic development corporation, to give the residents more of a statement to it.
Like when I go to Sioux Valley, I show up for my twenty-five dollar capital credit, for my statement credit, before we also roll down things.
There's really two major ones, is the, what I call the hybrid chamber of commerce one, or the just, it's there to be used with the city to develop land, not to go to the. So we want to, if the city, Colton want to get rid of property, you gotta go through this whole circus issue, which is up to hand about now. Or you have an economic development corporation, you can do it. And they can go out and then actually market it, sell it, don't have to give it a praise, just list it and sell it. And, and the thing is, is development, we're not just stopping, like, that out there, it's not, we're, we're main focus, I mean, we're, yes, we're getting that focus right now. But we eventually want to move throughout town, like, figure out how to go downtown, we talked about Sioux Valley, their development work, and we're getting on board on some funding to, you know. Where else can we spend money to, not just for the development side? So, I just really feel that this development group can do more good for the community than the city can.
And you got to start somewhere.
Yes.
You got to start pushing it somewhere, it's never gonna grow.
No.
It's just gonna be tabled like it is.
Yeah.
And you also need to help you, because. The city council, yes, you could do it, but it'd be a more long drawn out, also, you're gonna have a lot of other things to do.
Well, and that's where, yeah, where they kind of report, I mean, council's always gonna have the last say on everything, and. But, yeah. Any more questions on it? Would you guys be good, but if we did two payments of twenty-five thousand, or do you always want to do a lesser amount to start?
I agree with Kobe, if the budget, the funds are there, I mean, what better way to go to expanders?
I mean, it's still the city's money, I mean, granted, it's a.
I think it's two payments, yeah, you know, just some.
Yeah.
Something maybe comes up, and we need to. Spend some on some other action.
Appreciate that, okay, well. Give a motion for that?
Yeah.
Kobe? Second?
I'll second it.
Still, all those in favor?
All right.
All right, fine. Okay. Um, approve all new welcome signs in Colton? You got more on, on that?
Um, just that, that's a, a little picture. Yep, the, there's a, so the, the MDO is just a wood sign, we're gonna get seven to ten years. Um, the poly metal, that's gonna last. I mean, the, the graphics you put on it will fade, but, I mean, we're gonna get ten, fifteen thousand. Depending on the, how much sale it gets.
You're talking four signs, you're right.
Yeah, we have four now?
No.
Just a, but we don't, we don't have one on the. Just a, but we don't, we don't have one on the north.
No, that was gone. We had, we had all four.
We had one from the.
We had all four, we, we tried to get him in on insurance, cause it blew. But we did have him in all.
Yeah, cause one of them got, I should call it, huh? And this is driven, was, was there one coming in or not?
Yep, it's, it's down there a little bit.
I remember that one, I drive, when I drive into town that one every day. Went to, went to school, you know.
So what was that post from the one beer during time? Cause that had the, the posts and everything in it, just curious, cause we're gonna have to get new posts anyways.
Um, you sent that over to me, didn't you?
I gave you that, all the sheets out of him, I don't remember.
Is, uh, is Brenda still patient? I don't know, we can ask her. Brenda Amison.
I thought she moved out.
She did, but I mean, she's still a part of Colton.
I thought Rick Digger though signed a long time ago, but.
I don't know.
But this, these prices here are, by the, are. One, two, three, all the, oh no, this is.
All this is? This is not anything. This is still, I can make that happen. That two, the same one there? What's that one say?
Fourteen forty two eighty four, about. Business signs.
Oh, yeah, you got one then.
So what's that have, you know, it's a. Yeah, so I'm doing four, deep holes. Well, that should've been everything, so four of them. Minus that, uh. Rolex, so city signs, I wrapped those posts in Rolex, so they look brown, they look nice, sort of green tree. Um, but that stuff, you have to have a special Rolex that is the, uh, treated compliant, so it doesn't start oxidizing. Cause other stuff you put it right on, it's gonna oxidize and go right off.
So what's this four dot eight white aluminum jar you have on that thing?
So it is a, it's a poly metal, but it's the thinner stuff on that. I'm sure that's only, like the classified is a three sixteens, I don't know what yours is, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure what.
Yeah.
That, that should be the same stuff that the Colton business signs were on of. But I'm not sure, you had the sample there and I went during with, with my couple minutes.
This is four eighty and that's about done.
So I think this is a spreadsheet and that's for all.
That's for all of them?
Yes.
All for, this is for.
That's pretty cheap.
Okay, I've seen this, okay.
And as long as that's still good, cause I was, we bought a month and a half, we'll give it a, so prices may differ more.
I think it'll help.
Yeah. Hey Diane.
You're always so.
Yeah, I knew that to hear it. And you could go, you could go with this and we can put the graphics on it, you know. But that depends on if we wanna see if she wants to paint them again.
Right.
I mean. If she wants to paint them, that's.
That's, but whatever, we'll be looking, it's a lot for her to paint, four signs at one time.
Yeah.
Or if she wants to paint, she can do a mirror or something on, something at the porch or something.
Yeah. And that's could be something like that, I don't know, I guess I would say go more towards, uh.
Yeah, it is. But it, yeah, it's not the.
Yeah. I mean, if we wanna table it for next month, I can reach out there and ask if you guys wanna do it.
Well, how long would it take for it to, that's four times, how long?
Probably won't be on back.
That's a, yeah, table, I got a couple ways of projects yet, so.
Okay, you guys good with this table and get our next one? Okay. Um, we can go to the sewer rates, summer rates.
I was gonna say, did you wanna talk about that Dell's ambulance?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I.
Before we skip over that completely?
I forgot about that, Dell's ambulance, they just kinda gave out their.
They're looking for donation.
Donation.
They gave out their financial info. He said it's been a couple of years since Colton's donated.
Do you know much about that there, Monty? Can I ask you some questions on that? Look, our app was.
Commissions.
Are they asking first or is that tomorrow?
He just, I think it's just the financials. And he was saying that Colt, Colt hadn't donated for a couple of years, so.
I don't think, no, I don't doubt, I didn't run a doubt, I get that for like fifty thousand, five thousand. Uh, I don't know, Crooks just did five thousand complete this year, but their service, they lost their service.
Okay.
Normally, I would say they'd probably come to you with a suggestion. Speed, I'm thinking about, see, I guess, donation. They're, they don't make, I mean, they're, they can bill for all the calls they want, but they run enough calls they.
Yeah.
Pretty much non-profit, in fact, they are a non-profit corporation. They're just not to beat the wheels to them. We, in Colton, only have, our app is respond, we do have mutual aid from Humble, they come with our, but the, the deal can't come. Ninety-nine percent of our calls are handled by our.
Okay. I gotta stay out of this one, this sun works for me.
Okay.
Does High Park give any donations to that?
We don't, we don't. They do come to townships, they do come to townships here. They come there, they save five thousand, six thousand dollars, that's how they do it. So they do have some kind of streams. They're paying full-time paramedics down, only four hours a day, at least one gun staff. They do have ongoing expense more than just vehicles, just getting equipment, they're paying full staff. Just like they get out of support.
Yeah.
Performance, they do very well. I think they just wanna get in the budget here, and I'll last year, they missed the budget, that was the biggest reason.
So maybe we can, uh.
They came late, so they just wanna be in, in the right budget.
Maybe we'll look at putting them in the budget, and just cut that budget down. Okay, so, okay. Alright, so, we're gonna go to summer sewer rates.
I don't have anything for that.
Uh, I, I, uh, so we've had, what, probably four people, Seth?
Um, another one came in today.
Probably five people asking about summer rates. For saying that they're watering their yard or filling their pool. Um, we've looked into it, Seth and I have looked into it, I never knew anything about it, um, council side. Um, it was something that our previous administrator did, they just came in and she adjusted the rate for the summer. So I've had a few that were kinda upset about it, and one person asked if they can get credited to their, um, monthly bills, that they can get it back. Because they didn't understand why change of power, now it was, they felt like they were getting punished. And we should've wrote out a letter saying that summer rates weren't gonna happen anymore. I said, I warned them that we didn't have a list. There wasn't absolutely no list, and we don't know who was on it or who's been on it. So I'm kinda just sitting, I'm bringing up the council, like you guys.
They used to have summer rates way back when we ran our well water.
Yeah, I remember.
And since they switched to well water, they now have, get away with a summer rate.
Yeah.
But yeah, there's always a summer rate and we, in Colton.
Which, and I don't think there's a problem with it, I just.
There's, they were getting it a year and two years ago.
Yeah, I just, I kinda just let them know that we'll be looking at doing it next year, but we're gonna set up a system and have a, kind of a contract. Not really a contract, but an application you fill out stating that you're just going to be watering your yard, in your pool, not just dumping it down, not. Cause it's also, it's not as go to go goons. And then we actually have somebody on record that's wanting it. But, so it's up to you guys if you wanna. Certain resident that wants. I think it was two months back, at least two months.
How much, how much you would discount it?
Well, we'd have to go and check, so what they, what was previously done, they'd go from, what was it, probably August.
They're going up another rate?
Well, they'd just take their average through the winter, their sewer rate through the winter, and then that would get applied through the summer. So you're probably looking, what, twenty dollars, maybe, something like that, per month difference? Now, do we want to, you know, credit this one resident for months?
I go, I water my garden all the time, and it really does the rate.
That's what I kinda explained to her, I said, it felt like it was kind of a hidden password deal.
Yeah.
And, um.
I think.
So.
Not a good person, that person tells, this person. Or do we have, that's had a whole lobby full of people.
Well, and that's what they asked, if we should go back and look, and I said, we just don't have the manpower to be, they're gonna do water bill.
I can see a suggestion next spring, we'll do it, so we know rates.
And I think we set that up where we do maybe look at April to August as the season rate, and then it's done. But then you have to be like three months current under water bill and, but that's another, another story, but. So, we just had, I probably had, we probably had five people call that asked about it, and we just had one that was kind of upset, cause. Like I said, she just wanted a notification that we weren't doing it. Didn't have anybody on file, didn't know. I mean, we would've had a list and decided to change it then, and we would've sent out a notification.
So basically, you're like, uh, you, through the year?
Through the year, and her, her deal, she said that she's not upset by it. She said that she just would've known that it wasn't happening, she wouldn't have been watering their yard. So, I get it on both sides, but. Our side, we didn't, didn't know. I didn't know. All these years.
From the legal standpoint, do you guys set your rates every first of the year? By resolution?
Yeah.
Do you set up a, every week, day, four?
I've never seen it come across.
Well, there's no such thing.
Yeah, so.
She's not come back and expect to get back when she had constructed notice of the rates, and it was not, not worth it in her. I would look at it or not, she'd like to split more out.
Yeah.
She could've asked it for now, make it more fun.
Well, she asked a couple, like probably a couple of months ago.
A month ago or something.
Month ago, but we were digging into it, trying to look to anything we had in the cities that stated that it was, we never found anything, so.
Don't want.
Okay. It's no. Fix. Um, I don't know if you guys seen the, the development group plan, or the Garrett's addition plan? I guess you all have a chance to look at it.
I'm gonna do it.
Yep.
I can hang on, yeah.
I, I was thinking, we could probably get one or anything better.
I, I.
You wanna do it?
Yep.
They want to, yeah, they want to.
Oh, they won't?
I'd rather pay you.
So, this is what they're, what we're looking at. Right now, so this'll be, pretty much, this is what we're going after right now for funding, is this part here, this'll be our second. Second phase there. It's a total of forty-nine homes and.
I do have a crew top.
Phase one is forty-nine homes?
Yep. Print Dell's off. That's kinda what Diane has, Dan's had their development meeting, and that's kinda what we're looking at for prices. They're not set in stone, but that's kinda what we're looking at prices. So, green seventy-five, blue.
Sixty-five?
Yellow fifty-five. We've got pretty much the development group, kinda wants council's blessing on the, on the plans.
Uh, sixty-five, fifty-five, uh, seventy-five is green rate.
Potassium blue and yellow?
Yeah, yeah, green seventy-five, sixty-five, fifty-five. And these lots over here are the ones that, that. Already wants them. Might be sold.
These down here that are sold?
No, nothing sold yet.
But, but we have a tentative that we could have five.
Beers.
Which ones?
We potentially have on this corner, the guy had some, we have one, so potentially we have one person wanting five. But we have, we have a lot, a long ways to go, we still have to set our covenant, covenants and all that.
What do you street name, cause I'm trying to get, I'm through drive up there.
Did it on the lot, hurt our averages?
I mean, if you wanna buy.
I don't know.
No, I don't care, you'll buy a whole street, go name it. I'm trying to get. Anyone wanna name us these banners?
Don't know if they have.
And signs of property. Yeah, I think these are blockout ones on.
I do have another.
Yeah, you gotta copy.
I can make you copy two. Oh, this one? Yep. Here's the check my number will be a little bit. Here's the, really here's two, here's, these are showing the walkouts in. There, so the, the green are the whole eight foot walkout.
And the yellows are, okay, what's the direction?
Oh, oh, sorry, sorry, Diane, that's a different, we gotta, this is a, this is this one.
Oh, you got it, okay.
Say what, twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
The surface streets at the top on the way.
Yeah, so that'd be down there, yeah. Oh, okay.
Did we decide anything on the lines?
Uh, I think we're going.
You're tabling it.
Oh, yeah.
Can I also?
Say?
Where's that? Those are the ones with, he said the green were walkouts, right?
Yeah, those are the.
Um, not on that one though, those, that one's going by price for how much they're gonna cost.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on this one, the green are the. Yeah. It's, it's, it's kinda confusing, cause you've got two maps with the same colors on them. Cause the, on this one, that shows the walkout, the other one just shows the prices, the potential prices.
Okay, yeah. So it's, this is the cemetery walk, it's great. This is the cemetery road coming here?
Yeah.
It was go up and down the cemetery?
Yeah, cause that's Diane's and the old bird's right there.
Okay, the old bird's here.
And then he actually owns this property here as well.
So. Where is, um, Swingers?
Swingers is right here.
This is, and all this.
That's all, yeah, it's Swingers house, that's, this is all over here.
So this is all Donna's?
No.
Yeah.
That's Donna's, this top portion is Dave's all summer, yeah.
Okay, alright. Alright, so she owns one, and he owns up the same too.
Yeah, as far as I know. Yeah, as far as I know.
You see someone looking around the five on the south end there with the quiet neighbors back there?
Uh, the north end. That was one Z one.
No, that, those two lots on northwest corner are still, in my opinion, the best lot.
The south last ones are gonna be decent sized lots up here.
Are there any twin homes in the first edition or first phase?
We're, we're looking at, doing that, probably zoning a couple lots for twins. Like I said, we haven't really got our plans over and done with yet, so. Trying to decide if having a minimum square footage, mountain brick, you know, stone. And I, if you ask, they can put up sheds, so no.
Okay, can we bring in, um, like the South Dakota Governor home?
Yeah, no.
Um, trailer houses, I've added.
No. No, we, going, going, going for this grant, they want us to stay with them, uh, South Dakota, first time homeowner, loan. So, which is now three hundred and forty thousand, so. I mean, it's not.
Like the standard homes, the, nice, the level.
Yeah.
Keep it simple, rock or work on the front of the house, plant one tree and have it, it's really.
Mike says, no trees in the boulevards. But, no, just kinda need you guys' approval on those, so. You guys like them or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, it's good.
No wind generators?
No wind generator. Yeah.
No car lots?
For, for, uh. Sioux Metro Growth Alliance, we always have one representative, I'm gonna appoint Monte Kootman to that position. I think Monte's gonna do good for us. He's eager for it.
I had a good job.
When's your first meeting, Monte? Um, we need to come up with a special meeting to start doing budget, so what day it works. The funnest part. No.
You can still come.
Just thought it's fun as legal evaluation meetings.
Yeah.
So, we gotta have this, what, what day is?
September?
I was, I thought it was October ten.
Yeah, okay, well, yeah, it was October because, you know, September was.
Cause we needed it, uh, the second reading in September.
Yeah, we're gonna have two readings before October, that's what it was.
So we're, we're looking in September.
Unless we wanna have another special meeting in September, cause we gotta have two readings on it.
I'm not sure, I can't remember, I think it, it sounds right.
So if we want to.
First meeting in October would be the tenth, that's right.
October third, we'd be, or yeah, October, yeah, we need to have it done before then.
They have to go back to September.
So, pretty much fifteen through the twenty-sixth. They wanna have a meeting in August, and they'll read it in September, finalize, not until we get one. So, pretty much, August fifteen through twenty-sixth. Any day of the week work better for anybody?
We're talking next week?
Well, next to. Twenty-second to the twenty-sixth, so. I mean, we could.
So, still we have five days, we do. We could do the twenty-ninth, that last Monday.
Uh, yeah, that'd be our last day of the twenty ninth again.
Yeah, that, our last day would be that, so.
I'm open to anything.
I got a meeting on the twenty-ninth. Twenty-second. What time?
Five thirty? Five thirty?
AM or PM?
Don't state that because, uh, we had a development meeting at, on Sunday at seven-thirty, and Sioux Valley team at seven-thirty in the morning, I got a text. Where are you guys at?
Said, seven-thirty in the afternoon, oh, jeez, I was wondering you guys were gonna get after it before, uh, church.
So, twenty-second at five-thirty is the budget meeting.
Monty, that works for you?
Well, we can use. Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that, that's, um, Labor Day, isn't it?
September meeting will be on the twelfth.
Moving on, one thing else, so the next Colton market is be with twentieth August? We are, uh, talking with Grace Fanny P., our pool manager, we got a lot of excess, like theater, eat, pop, some candy. Just wondering if we just sell it off at the market, if we wanna, just open up booth and get rid of it, instead of storing it off for next year. Nothing, that's what I said, we just start fresh next year and move on.
You thinking of selling at that cost, or?
Grace is giving a number together where with city, not even lose any money, per se on it, I mean, at that, at that point, then we can just get rid of it. Donate it or something.
If we sell everything, we're only out fifteen dollars, cause that's the fee for setting up the booth.
Yeah.
And if, maybe we can adjust for that, and then what, however long the.
Yeah.
The concessions work, or.
We just don't wanna store it, we have candy, we found candy from a long time ago that was in here and top.
Oh, you, I can tell you horse, I found it there, um, should, should I tell you about the. I, I found a, a meat and cheese basket in there from, I think last year, maybe. Yep, that was in, that was just sitting in there, and I was like, oh, wow, this is.
They've never busted out with a meeting, it was just put aside.
It's in the, it's in the, I, I found in the landfill now, that was tossed when I found it.
I will be gone that weekend, sudden has, uh, four H rodeo in Port Pier, but can anybody do the booth that day?
Which week, day, day?
The twentieth, not this weekend, but next Saturday.
Oh, we're going, where in the city is that weekend, sorry, I would love to get that though. If you put it by Heather's, that's over, I felt for two.
You can do that, cause Grace says otherwise, if not, she can, we can hire a cool person to do it too. They have that much value that there is, no, just without knowing numbers.
Um, I'm not sure, I don't know how much we have left down there, that's all Grace.
Well, and that's, it could change too, cause we'll see what the last day of pool goes, you know, she, we talked, um, the park department having a pool party. Kind of, or at the park and all that, so we're just gonna donate a lot of the pop and water to the park department too, clean up there. So, we'll just see, it could, it could change where we might not have hardly anything, and then. She's been kinda pulling.
Pulling it off.
Pulling it up, bringing it up to the pool.
Yeah, let's just see if we got left.
Let's see if we got left, um. Okay, we'll move by Friday.
Um, and there was one more thing I, I forgot to bring up, um, Direct Technologies called today, and they, um. They had a, a flag on their system that one of our hard night drives on a, I don't know if it's on the server, if it's on the backup. Needs to be replaced, um, and he think, they think they can get it Fri- the park Friday, and come and install it Friday. I won't be here, um, is somebody gonna be able to come, be around for them?
I, I don't see it being any time before, like, six or five or anything.
Yeah, and if they, maybe just wanna stay with them while they're doing it, so keep someone, you know, I would, I, that would, that'd make me very happy.
Well, I mean, I think if you just locked everything up.
Yeah, I would, um.
No, I know.
That's just peace of mind, I'm, that, me doing that.
We got something missing from.
Yeah, I could come over and check in on this one.
We have something missing at that point in time, from that period, we know where it came from.
Yeah.
Just have them check in and check out.
Yeah, I'm gonna lock, I, when, Tuesday, I'm gonna lock everything up and get everything secure.
Just give them Kobe's contact info.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
I have one more issue with the park, not issue, but somebody approached me about leaving one of the, oh, house, or porta potties. By the campsite.
Leaving them, they, they want them picked up or?
They want, no, they want one there, they were all picked up after country days.
Oh, okay.
And I think we always left them sitting there till late in the fall, I think they picked them all up.
I bet they picked them up in baseball bowl, really.
Yep, so they want, they were just wanting to pick them up, a porta potty there, till camper season. Cause there's no place else, you know, if you got a camper that doesn't have a bathroom, you're kinda.
Yeah, well, when we lock up the pool one, it keeps getting destroyed, so.
Yeah. So that was just a concern some had, if they could have a porta potty brought back there.
I one ordered.
I guess all, we have, our cameras working up there yet?
They're working on, uh, well, they're working, Pete's got them, but they're working on getting, uh. So there's an issue with wifi, so Pete logs in under his name, he, it's really in and out. It's buffering all the time, but then if he logs underneath there, he's good to go. There's a little bit of buffering, so we don't know what's going on.
Just we have some, so car pulls up in there, and it's not a camper, it's another wave, we can kinda monitor who goes in and out, to know that same incident.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, there's not a whole lot of time left, how long do we really?
Probably only a month.
September, maybe October, we have people up there yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, they didn't have a bathroom, and we can't.
Okay. No. I mean, I guess, if you wanna even order one tomorrow, so.
Yeah, I can, um, I, Pete ordered them last time, so I'll have to, I'll give him a shout quick and have him text me their number.
Okay.
And get it ordered. Yep.
Sounds good. I don't have anything else, do you have anything? I was in favor.